We're also here to give the information on orders for those that actually read.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You'll get 100% disclosure on what's going on with the exception of other quotes. Madam Curran?
Item number three. Consideration to approve the following minutes, April 16th, 12:12.
Probably motion by trustee Harvey, probably sent by trustee Andrea. Any questions regarding the ordinance, kind of, out there, trustee Corino?
Just that I'll be explaining from the book because I was not at it until April 16th.
Okay. Trustee Moore, no. Trustee Andrea.
No.
Trustee Benson? Okay. All right. Also, hearing none, no comments, okay?
Item number four. Consideration to approve expenditures, grand total, all funds, $609,758, 402 cents.
Okay. Probably motion by trustee Moore, probably sent by trustee Andrea. They have a report of financial trustee Moore.
We have AT&amp;T, $5,407,150. We have Technic, $2,765. Blue Golf, $103,362.26. Broadview Westchester, $102,892.26. Bushman, $71,875. Rude Industries, $41,105,930. Hancock, $18,460. Edmont Press, $4,496. Geno Negan, $26,090. The Mystic Lee, this math, $239,699.59. Voss, Field and Arrow, $16,391.40. Mega Tree Services, $8,480. MFA Construction, $7,916,68. Michael Arcom, $5,575,000. T and T, $2,482,000. Which is a total of $5,86,299.30.
Thank you, trustee Moore. Any questions from members of the board, side to my left, trustee Corino?
Yes. I talked at length about this last year, to the point where even I was sick of hearing myself talk about it. But back in 2003, the Village of Broadview adopted a budget system for handling our finances. Prior to that, we were in an appropriations system. Under the appropriations, we have the first three months of the fiscal year in which to pass appropriations, ordinance, and budget. Under the budget system, our budget is required to be in place before the end of the fiscal year, before we start the new fiscal year. Last year, as I became a trustee, I talked about the fact that without a budget in place, we do not have the authority to spend money. It was a very contentious issue, and at the end of it, I was under the impression that the people involved with our budget understood this, and we would be on time this year. However, once again, we are starting this new fiscal year, which began May 1st, without a budget and without the authority to spend money. I wanted to say that and get that much out. I can't think... The only thing I can add to everything that I said and shared in writing and verbally is that I had an opportunity to speak with our auditors, and they confirmed to me that I am correct and that we were supposed to have our budget in place by the beginning of the fiscal year, and we do not have the authority to spend money. So I will be... That is the reason that I will be voting no on gaining bills for now.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Corino. Trustee Moore?
Okay. Now, I'm gonna say this. Last year, we did go through the same thing, and we found out that we are not being penalized one dime for being late. With Tom, who is doing the budget, he's doing it as accurate as he can, and we are in compliance. We are not... We are not in violation at all. These are professionals doing it. These are professionals doing it. So I just... I just beg you, like they said, girl, if we educate ourselves with this stuff, 'cause me, I didn't know about it when I first came here, but now that I'm educated on it, we are not in violation. Thank you.
Go. Trustee Harvey?
No, I ask my question, it's due in a week or two.
Trustee Benson?
Just the one thing that we called in the last four weeks, that part of the BNF technical, is that fee, Mr. May, is it special fee here? Did we get the correct fee?
I'm not sure.
Oh, there it is.
Is something there?
Yes, BNF. Is that five hundred that we pulled in the last meeting? Did we get the correct fees, or did we buy in the contract wherever it's located?
That's all. Everything in the process.
We did. All right, wait, hold on.
Well, by the way, look at this, trustee Corino.
Yeah, don't move.
This is, uh, we've got a bunch of... Would you please explain what process we're going through with the budget and where we are, so that the general public here will know what's going on with our current budget for this period of year, what the penalties are, what, you know, and what the timing for any of this?
What, um, where we're at, is the budget, it's completed, but it's not been presented and approved yet. It was last Thursday, I believe, I got the final budget request. Spent the weekend getting the numbers together. I want to have to go through a review process with finance director, which time it'll go on public display. There's a 14-day period when it's open to the public. Then I'll do a presentation and approve it. We have moved that up about two months from last year. I was shooting to get this done by April 30th. It's a little problematic, because a lot of the numbers and figures that we have, well, there's, um... The state runs low on minus, and if we don't know exactly what our revenues are going to be by waiting, we could actually get a more accurate estimate of what our revenues are going to be, and then plan, figure out what we can actually spend in the next fiscal year. For example, this year, all of the department heads have given me budget requests, and there's no frivolous expenditures in there. There's a lot of good ideas that they've come up with. Reorganizing the police department, new equipment for the fire department, new computer systems for the business department. Problem is, we only have so much money. And when I compared all the requests against the expected revenue, it would actually cause a deficit. And what we spent this weekend during the mayor meeting on Sunday is going through and trying to determine what is a priority. And just, I don't... Some of you guys are new to the meetings. In 2009, there was a large deficit. It actually got worse the first year in office, because the budget had already been set before when the current administration started. We started this new method of budgeting, and people that I've been here a lot, I'm just repeating prior years, but what they used to do was look at last year's budget and add it, and then we'll look at what they actually spent. We've kind of switched around what we're doing. We're looking at what we spent, compared what was budgeted, budgeted, and looking at the revenues we actually got, not the budgeted revenues, to come up with the numbers for next year. Because we're doing it differently, we are much closer to being balanced. Last year, we had a surplus. It's not official yet this year, but as a couple days ago, we had $175,000 surplus. After talking with the mayor this weekend, what we decided is there is still... Well, let me go back a couple years. The very first budget we tried, that we put into place, would have had a $300,000 surplus. Then we had the floods, which was $500,000 worth of unbudgeted expenses, which threw us in the negative for the year. Mother Nature has helped us this year. It was an extremely warm winter. It didn't snow. We saved money on gas. We saved money in the fall. That's helped surplus this year. What's that? That's right. That's right. What we're wanting to do, what we want to accomplish here, is to get in a position where Mother Nature doesn't hurt us. So what we're going to do this year is, this is another, um... This is another example of why this process has worked. One of the things in the past that they did is they would short the pension fund payments to provide money to do other things in the building. We've taken the position to fund the police and fire pensions, the maximum amount, to get them fully funded. What happens by doing that is each year going forward, the amount you've got to put in that pension, unless if you short it, the amount you've got to put in is more. Because we fully funded the pension fund, this year, we had another surprise. We're going to have a $600,000 decrease in property taxes due to $200. It's a refund sales tax due to one of the typical expenses. But this is the first year that we're seeing the results of fully funding the pension funds that's been totally offset by the pension fund decreases. So it was a wash. And pointing that out, the mayor's saying, "That's why we need to stay with the plan." Yes, we do need more police officers. Yes, we do need a new firing. Yes, it would be nice to have a new computer system for the building department. But those are things that we can phase in when we're on a much sounder financial footing. So what we're looking to do is to meet the increases that we are mandated to do and cut into the debt for the building. So we're wanting to budget the surplus, and that's what I'm in. I'm in the final stage of putting that all together, and then I'll pass that out to the board, and then the public will have the opportunity to look over the budget.
Thank you.
Pretty much it. So there's no penalty for being late?
No, there's no penalty for being late.
We tried to... We walked the path, and just so that everyone knows. We've changed a little bit of how the building's been looking at the budget, where we've been going to put a number up there and have a target to hit, so that we can be as accurate as possible to the target. Tom's got the next job, and we're going to do it again. We had some proceedings to continue to back, and call for some more. Well, this year, we're going to get the black. We're budgeting right now, so it's black again, but it's coming here, and that's where we are. So I understand trustee Corino's issue, where she's concerned about not having the budget prepared by the Thursday of April, while it's not prepared, presented to the board. There is no penalty for being a little bit late, but I'd rather be a little bit late and be a whole lot more active than to be on time and be way off the pace. And then we're going to hit the budget. Okay? So we're going to be a couple of weeks late. The budget's pretty much done. I sat here over a medium with Tom for several hours. We went and went over the fine points of budget. Carved up, some department heads won't be too happy with their budgets when they get them back, but it is what it is. You know, so we carved up a little bit, and we are at a point where I think we're going to be comfortable and presented to the board within the next, uh, week. Are you defending it? Yes. So, okay. So he's just about done with it. I think he's going to go over the financials, everything he's going to have before he's approved. With that being said, there's no more comments from the members of the board. Madam Curran, you got a vote on it? On most.
Right. Any questions?
Oh, you did?
Yes, I see if you're in my email.
Trustee April? Trustee Abraham, have a question. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Trustee McGree?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Brown, are you?
No.
Item number five. Reports of village officers will be given in the next board meeting, Monday, May 21st. Item number six. We have a communication from family outreach program. There is questions permission to conduct activities in Broadview.
I can read the recommendations from the safety committee. This is actually from both police chiefs. They gave their approval, as well as Director Ames. They recommend a permission granted for this event. The suggestion is the intersection of Rosa River and 25th Avenue is where the family outreach program will use to distribute posters or buttons in the Village of Broadview on June 22nd and 23rd. I have a time to bring, and they'll be out there guessing as many as they can.
Uh, there's, um, you have a call ahead?
No, you don't need to go.
Okay. I mean, we have a presentation by developers concerning potential development at 13th and 14th Avenue in Broadview.
Sharon, this is for you. Where's Sharon go?
Better. All right.
Stick around. Mr. Joe Rainer, who was actually business owner here in Broadview, has made a proposal to develop the Aprilville Roosevelt Road, and I'm going to introduce him, and his team to you all, to do a brief presentation on what they've proposed to develop the Roosevelt Road. Mr. Rainer, always a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Rainer. I'm very happy to see this kind of turnout in this place. I'm going to pay tribute to Mr. Rainer, just aside. That's a tough job. Try to find all of the elements that cross his desk every single day. It's a tough job. About a year and a half ago, he approached me, bought this piece of property between 13th and 14th. I've been in Village of Broadview since 1990. I bought a building in 1821 Gardner Road. It was vacant. $178,800 square feet. Vacant. A printing company had been in there. It went bankrupt. In 1990, we had a similar situation in this country, with the economy being control as a result of the failure of the savings alone. And the banks dried up. Literally dried up. You couldn't borrow any money. But I had some money, and I had some partners. One of my partners was an architect. This young lady sitting in front of me was working there. We bought this building. We brought seven new companies to Village of Broadview. And about 240 jobs ultimately, over a five-year period. People don't understand, you know, they say, "Well, you own a building." I'm an owner, and I'm a board, because I own the bank. It took four and a half years of hard work before I ever took a dime out of that building. But I love that building, and I love this town. And in 1999, I got the word that a building in 2000 South 25th Street was being vacant. Some company out of New Jersey had bought an ongoing business that was in there, and they milked it. When they got through milking it, they moved it to New Jersey. One of the reasons they moved it was that the taxes were too high. But we had a vacant building. I saw another opportunity. I had a very, very good friend, God bless his soul, he's in hospice right now, but he owned a bank, and he believed in us. We bought that building for $3.3 million. I told him, "I don't have any cash right now." He said, "How much do you need to buy it, fix it up, and have money set aside for taxes, and give at least?" I said, "I need $3.9 million." I said, "I'll give you the $3.9 million." And we bought the building. I put sixteen companies in that building. It took three and a half years to get it in the bank. I was into bread all the time. Thank God, I had the loan to cover the taxes and the interest and everything else for two years. On the 30th of September of 2002, we lost another big company in this town, General Motors. Moved out of my building at the 2600 South 25th Street that I own today, me and Bank of America. Let me tell you about the banks today. The cell bank sold to Bank of America in 2007 for $23 billion. That's a little bit more money than we call on. Bank of America couldn't care less about Broadview, I don't know. They couldn't care less about Joe Reed. And it makes no difference that at one time, me and a former partner owed that bank $48 million. And we were never a day late on a payment. That man comes to me one day, eighteen months ago, and says, "I need some help. Don't just take out of Broadview, put something back." I said, "What can I do to help you?" He said, "I need to develop this piece of land. We got nowhere to eat in this town." I think about, "We got the market restaurant." To God, I greet my wife. If I want to go to lunch, if I want to go to lunch, I either got to go to Riverside, or I can go to Roosevelt, or go to Burger King, or go to Popeyes Chicken.
You can go to Marquee. You go outside.
You getting the Peppies, Peppies coming?
I don't need a assistant, Tom.
Here's a man standing by the door, getting on the corner, saying, "On 22nd, 17 years."
Let's get down to the really friendly. Everything the mayor has asked of me, every meeting he's asked me to attend, I go. And I bring as many people as I can. So when he asks me to get involved, I say, "Well, the first thing we got to do is this. I got to go down Roosevelt Avenue from 25th to Ninth Avenue on both sides of the street." So I got up one morning on Sunday after I went to church. And I met my associate at 6:30 in the morning, and carefully went down one side of the street and recorded every address and every building and every business, and then came down the other side of the street. Why at 6:30 in the morning? Because there's no traffic. I wanted to find out where the boards were. What are we missing? We've got three banks. We got a hardware store. We've got some hairdressers. We got a pizza joint. We got a U-Haul. Work hard with the boards. What do we need? But I told him at the time, money is forgettable. Banks weren't borrowing any money eight two months ago. And they're not too eager to loan you money today. So the next thing that had to happen was, we had to bottle our time. Had to try to put a little team together. I had to try to come up with some money. Then I asked my wife and my partner, "So I'll introduce some people. Let's get involved, and let's try to help do something." I'm not just being a nice guy. I don't need this shopping center. But I need this town to become bigger and better and stronger, because that building at 2600 South 25th Street were on the border. If I'm not careful, every three years, that loan comes up. And the last two times that loan came up, if that of that building dropped over $2 million. And now, this is the God's truth. The last time we came up, I got a beautiful house in California, right on the ocean, which is where I should be right now. Stop listening to all this nonsense about a strip club, because we don't need a strip club in this town.
That's right.
Because if I'm going to put the money in that shopping center, the last thing, the toughest thing it's going to be, Mr. Rainer, is to try to attract top-name people to come there. But I'm not going to do it without top-name people.
That's right.
That's for starters. I had to market that house in California in order to pay the loan down because of the value drop. I'm not just being a nice guy. I want to do what's right. We can make Roosevelt Avenue mean something. We got to get the right people into this center, because once you get a top name in there, they're going to want, they're going to want to go right down the street. It's not going to be easy. We've already spent money. If you take the average strip center, what's the biggest problem?
Our parking.
Amen. The village says you got to have three spaces for every thousand feet. So if you build 10,000 feet, you got to have 30 parking places. Well, it doesn't work. And it doesn't work with five per thousand feet. So I told my wife, "When you start designing this thing, I want eight or nine parking places for every thousand feet." Because how many of you have driven into a center, there's no place to park, and you run right out? So, the next thing we did, in order to put a package together to get it out to the top companies in this country, two weeks ago on a Sunday morning, I did Laurie a little nudge. I says, "Let's go." And I'm done. She says, "It's Sunday. Where are we going Sunday morning at 6:30 in the morning?" I said, "We're going to start at Lexington and drive down 25th Street to Surman. Bring your camera. Then we're going to turn around, and we're going to go the other way. Bring your camera. We're going to take pictures of every fine building in the industrial corridor of this town." And this is just a few. There's 26 buildings, probably, I can tell you right now, in my building, there's got to be 400 people walking in that building. Now, try to be in, try to be working in a building, you get an hour for lunch, maybe. Where are you going to go eat? Where are you going to go eat in Broadview? Might as well bring your lunch, because you don't have time to get your car and go anywhere. You don't have time to go there and order and get something. Again, unless you want to go to Burger King, go through your drive-thru. So we need top-notch, good restaurants for this piece of land. And that's what we're going to do. My partner's sitting there, his name is Jose Orgay. Jose, why don't you stand up? Jose, Jose's a graduate of DePaul University, is a real estate broker. I've known him for 32 years. He knows where he's going. He's helping. He'll be involved in the leasing. He'll be involved in the building of this shopping center.
I want to say that I'm very impressed by what you've done to town. That's very good. Very impressive. I don't think white folks can, you know, that would be a speech.
Next, I'm going to introduce a bodyguard. I met Laurie in 1980. She was 20 years old. She was 20 years old.
I'm his arm candy, just so we get it straight.
We bought a building, partner of mine and her ex-boss, who's an architect, in Belwood. Phil Phil goes to building. This building was 700,000 square feet and vacant. And it had been vacant for eight years. And within 18 months, we found a lesson about her boss at the time. We filled that building 90% occupancy. Every tenant we brought in was from a different time. From '87 to '91, Laurie and I worked on that building. She started chasing me in 1987. And I finally caught her in 1992. Laurie Rea.
Hi, I'm Laurie. That was a great, that's how fans are following. I'm just gonna cast these out beautifully, as we were asked to. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna present the, what we envision of this piece of property. Get out of the way, because I'm really the tall one here in the group. The building, as we see it, would be about 9,900 square feet. There's a footprint on site plan. Can everybody see it and hear me okay? Using my outside voice, okay? And as we see it, shopping centers can be pretty boring. You gotta, gotta get some excitement in them. So we see two towers flanking each side. Now, remember, we've got the medical center at this side with lots of customers. And we see somewhere between two to four tenants in this building, all food-related. I'm gonna give you an idea of the people that we have already been in communication with. This is just as a start, okay? Sit-down service meals, Panera, A Harber, which is a smaller group of restaurants that are incredible. Joe and I just had breakfast there last week. Applebee's, Chili's, Sweet Tomatoes, Loopy Tuesdays, Corner Bakery, Olive Garden, the Walker Brothers, the original Pancake House. Great cinnamon apple pancakes. Okay, dine-in and carry-out meals, Panera, Chipotle, Five Guys Burgers, Jimmy John's, and Queezed doughs. Has everybody had dinner? Because I haven't, did this sound good. As far as Fluffy, gotta have Starbucks. And we're also talking to Caribou. Juice Bar, Jamba Juice. Healthy eating. Of course, bagels and sandwiches. Einstein Bagel Brothers and Great American Bagel. We wanna get these people in competition with each other. Lumalabas Pizza, I was born and raised and weaved on it. It's incredible. Paisaco's Pizza, which is their brother, and Sapino's Pizzeria. That's just the start of people that were enticing to this area. Tools we're using is the photos we've taken of the industrial corridor. And it isn't just the attraction of all of those potential customers and you as residents, but also the bordering town. We've got all the industrial areas in Melrose Park, Maywood, et cetera. I mean, this is just gonna be a magnet for customers. Drag tax dollars and supporting these people who will be tenants. We'd like for these towers to be our featured tenants because we have the potential, here on the medical center side, to put an outdoor patio with landscaping. Great location to go for coffee, for lunch, and sit outside. Nice landscaping. On this side of the building, we have a potential also to put another outdoor dining area or if it speaks to the tenants, keep it landscaped and nice. As Joe said about parking, we offer 73 parking stalls on our site, plus three handicap stalls. And we have the ability to put eight parking stalls off of our properties that are already sort of formulated along Cortina Street. We have a pylon sign in the center of our property that would list the potential tenants. And right here at 13th and Roosevelt, we'll make a very nice entrance to Broadview. Welcome to the Village of Broadview, population, et cetera. Letting people know they're in Broadview when they see this beautiful shopping center. Along the backside, we would like to propose a drive-thru for quick coffee in the morning that we all need, and a drive-out on this end. We'll have two curbs to cut, one on 13th and one on 14th, nothing on Roosevelt. We'll keep it nice and smooth, no traffic jams, plenty of parking, plenty of aisle space, all contained on our site. As far as building materials, we're proposing a rich earth-tone brick with flashing in it, which means it'll be a marble tone, so it doesn't just look like it's painted on. Stone caps, split-face block, along with stone accents, and a anodized bronze storefront, really rich storefront. And as you can see, the storefront is high, plenty of exposure, plenty of light in the restaurants. Beautiful dining experience. Any questions while I'm up here? Go for it.
With stop-ups, we have one right on 17th.
Yes. But you know, it's, it's a good point. But if they, Starbucks is, it's an amazing company. They're like in the city. They have the city. And even in communities, I mean, they just put it everywhere. Here, we have such, it's such a great destination. There's so many businesses, all the residents. So it, you know, the wall's kind of in their corner. But after we showed them those photos, they were just blown away.
Olive Garden, they require so much square footage. Their parking lot, they go for it. Look, Riverside, always hold you out.
Exactly. And here's something where if an Olive Garden expresses interest in going to, you know, second base, third base with them, obviously, they require more parking, but also more square footage for their dining. So that would, that would obviously mean that we would have maybe two or three tenants in this building. Because it could be a small baby place, or it could be a smaller Starbucks and then a larger dining experience. We even have the opportunity to put, if we were to do something like a potbelly's, where we have like an upstairs loft there. I'm sorry? Fountain? It's a great idea. We have the ability here on this side. Because this we would need for, this is the ideal spot for obviously an outdoor patio, but a fountain would be right here. Or what we could do is possibly incorporate the fountain with our, with the sign. That's a very good idea. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, ladies first, sorry. Coming out of 14th and Roosevelt, if you put a light there. Actually, everybody, I'll just speak to the light there.
Excuse me, you're gonna speak to the light?
Oh, please, I'll be your assistant too. And here we go. It is in discussion now. There's a proposed traffic light gap at this location of 14th and Roosevelt. Yes, sir?
Also, on the other side of it, side opposite of that, you also have, no. Yeah, side opposite of the strip mall, you also have additional land which would be extended over the block.
On the south side of the street there?
They know all the things. They're aware, but first things first. Let's just get one done. We gotta look at the other side of the street.
I'm sorry, I'm first.
Come on, join our team. You can be our eyes and ears out there looking for signs. Anyway, any other questions? Wow. We're gonna talk to the boss on that one.
Here's the story. You can't do anything without that. So when I went to the bank, the first bank, I went to Seaway. I invited the mayor to a meeting. Because I wanted him to hear what we're up against. They're willing to give us the money. That's the first hurdle we had to get over. They wanted to give us the money. But they're no different than any other bank. They only want to take half the risk. So where's the thing, give us a good sell. Come to us when you got a half lease. That's not a lot, 5,000 feet. All we need is one good restaurant. So that's, that's the ballgame. So the first thing we have to do is get your approval. We have to get the board's approval. Once we get the approval, we're at first base. We got a good plan, there's plenty of parking, we've got a good selling team. I've already had the third meeting with a top, top guy who's well-connected and who's doing this for 22 years. And he's connected to people like Caribou, Starbucks, 7-Eleven.
A Harber?
A Harber. What's the other one?
Panera? Walker Brothers, Applebee's, Panera, Corner Bakery.
He's really, really well-connected. And his dad was too before he retired. Here's what he gets down to. You got a plumbing problem, you call him. When I talk about industrial, I can do industrial since 1970. I built my first building. When it comes to retail, that's the same story. I can pick up the phone and call the top person at Panera, which I did. Guess what? You didn't voice me. And you don't get a phone call back. You know why? Because 50 million people across the United States are calling you. So here's what I did. I have a very good friend, a boy here, a friend of mine, that I've known for more years and I don't even wanna talk about it. I'll be showing my age. He owns 23 restaurants in Missouri, Southern Illinois, and Kansas. Called Pasta House. I said to him, "Do you know anybody at Panera?" He says, "I play golf with one of the top guys." I said, "Get on the phone and get me a name, whoever's in charge of the state of Illinois, particularly Chicago area." So I can make the phone calls and they'll take my call. I called him a week ago Tuesday, a week ago today. He doesn't even return my call yet. That's what we're up against. So it's not gonna be easy. The next step is to take this Laurie's put together and this. Because there are probably 3,000 people working in these buildings. And nobody, I will have, I will be calling every one of these people to find out how many employees do they have. We're gonna tell them what we're doing. We're gonna go see these people. And what we're gonna do is put a nice package together and a nice brochure. I was at a printer this morning, man, right down the street from me. One block away. We're gonna print a very nice brochure and send it to every Tom, Dick, and Harry, good restaurant across the United States. And then we're gonna do the follow-up work. And I've got the team to do the follow-up work. So that's what we're doing, that's what we're involved in. We need your support.
Actually, I have one question. Do we have any ideas of eating establishments you all would like to see in Broadview? In the back?
Yes. I have this one here, because I just frequent it. It's a breakfast place where they serve lunch and dinner. It's Butterfield's.
Butterfield's, okay.
I'll give it to you because I-
Wonderful.
And it's excellent. It's out by Inuit and Duquesne area. Very nice and full. And it's something different than the norm that we're accustomed to.
Yeah, that's like A Harber's, like that too. Okay, great idea. Thank you. Any others?
I got a question for you.
Sure.
So what do you need the village to do? To name you a developer of record and then transfer the property? You've been helping the mayor-
We're gonna buy the property.
You're gonna buy it?
No, that's, that's our apartment.
Thanks.
A lot. Across the street. Oh, 17th and 18th. Yeah, that's, that's a good question. We were just answering a question about the corner of 17th. The same guy we know, you're talking 17th and 18th.
Let's, let's let the presentation go. You guys are getting off track. We don't even own the property in 17th and 18th. So that, that's not even a subject of conversation. Probably 17th and 18th. She's talking about the old gas station on 17th and 18th. But like I said a while ago, we know all the papers. We gotta get one done first. And at that point, you'll be able to market the other. But to, let me start on one.
Mr. Ray, now, back when I used to have the business license fee, you needed help with my meetings along with a few other residents. I didn't have a big turnout, however, you did have a few residents.
Remember, attention for the comments. All right.
Okay, like I was saying, you came out with those business licenses, because I had a full committee here. And I did have some residents come out. Now, there are a few residents that I'm pretty ready to start a small committee with residents of all of them. And I'm pretty sure those residents are very small, would love to volunteer or help you all out in any ways possible. Am I right? That's what I'm saying right now. I mean, I got a, already, I got a group already. It's a small group. Anything small that you would need them to do, I'm pretty sure that they would be available or more than willing to help out with that as far as-
Is all the help?
Going to the-
Your speaker's not talking. Somebody's gotta sit down and call all those people.
I'm sure they would, I hope, like to help with that. I don't wanna speak out of turn. But that's what the committee is about. You do. All right.
Thank you for your attention, everybody in Europe. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ray, I've talked to Joe already. Joe is a very private business owner in town. How many businesses have you got in your room in town?
Sorry?
And you're building that you currently?
I'm building-
How many businesses have you got?
We have 27 tenants in the building.
27, yeah.
Not one of those, not one of those companies was in Broadview before. We've got all the surrounding area.
So thank you for coming out. So, you know, I'm working deals today to try to get Roosevelt over or develop. This is the first step. And we passed some other offers for the property to the other side of this one. We had an offer to put a gas station there. And also sort of car wash there. So, you know, that's not where we were trying to go. So, let you know, I mean, anything we walked up and said, "We'll give you $650,000 cash," you know. No, that's not where the journey's going. No car wash. Was that the $3 car wash? $3 car wash, which you can't eat there and get no sales tax off of it. So it wasn't easy. So that being said, we're gonna move along with our agendas. Hopefully, things will turn out okay. Like Joe said, I met with him over at the bank. And the bank is ready to actually fund, of course, the construction for this particular building. Thanks very much, Joe.
Good evening.
Item number seven. Unfinished business, 7A. Consideration of ordinance. Amendment section two, six one, broad created. Authorization of chapter six, dominant board. Olive Fields, entitled to forward in commission to a life title of 40 dollars per member for the zone in 40 fields meeting for the Village of Broadview, County of Pitt. Day of vote.
Motion to take this to the next board meeting. All right. Here's a probably motion by trustee McCreary to take this item. Probably second by trustee Moore. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, Moore, you carry it until the next board meeting. This is, uh, 21st?
Yes. Item number seven B. Considerations approved of regular business meeting minutes of April 2nd, 2012. I make a motion to approve?
All right. Probably most by trustee Brown Moreno, probably second by trustee Moore's approval of the minutes. Any questions on the minutes, Dr. trustee McCreary?
No.
Trustee Moore? No. Trustee McCreary? Trustee Carr?
No.
Trustee Bennett? Trustee Benson?
Yes. Um, for the page two, um, letter B, did you figure out how this is supposed to be written? Oh, did you get a change? It is? Okay, I have it too.
It hasn't changed.
Okay, how does it read?
I don't have it in front of me. Do you have it?
It's in the village's news.
Harry McCreary and the mayor received email all of the minutes, started a minute, and your request, trustee McCreary.
Okay, I know, I know. I think some people were having problems with my email, at least putting the wrong email. So that's why I didn't see it.
That is good.
That's good. So we found out that we, we put our names as a vote, basically. That's correct.
Do you want to answer?
No, I just wanted to say what I read off the email.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, Moore, you carry it until the next board meeting.
Item number seven, unfinished business, held a consent agenda, appointment eight through you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the following items. Letter I, letter K, L, M, N, O, and P. Pass second.
Okay, so probably goes by trustee Brown Moreno and probably second by trustee Harv. To approve the consent agenda with the seven devices, I, K, L, M, N, O, and P. Is that correct, trustee McCreary?
Yes.
And any questions or comments on the board starting with trustee Moreno as relates to the item's ordinance and consent agenda?
No.
Item number seven, consent agenda. Trustee Moore?
No.
Trustee McCreary?
No.
Trustee Harv?
No.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes, Harvey. Um, I thought earlier I was trying to say we were striking O, is that not correct?
She just took it off.
I mean, to vote on, she took it out of the consent agenda.
Right, so we're not discussing it right now. We're going to be talking about it later.
We're going to still talk about it? Okay, so it is not off the agenda, am I not mistaken?
We're going to have to go back to these other items.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, so we'll come off the consent agenda, go on the main agenda. Now, clerk, go each and every one of the other four items. O, if I get a vote for a second, then it will all update the agenda.
Oh, I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Therefore, items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, J, Q, R, S, T, and U are all approved. Item number four.
Item number I, consideration of ordinance, appointing Marvin Allen to the board of fire and police commissioners for the Village of Broadview. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
I hear your say.
I'll say.
Okay. This is probably what we need to discuss. There's been motion to approve Marvin Allen to be board of police and fire committees. And it was probably goes by trustee Moreno and probably second by trustee Harv to approve the appointment. Apparently, there's some problems here. We'll start with trustee Benson this time. Is there something you want to talk about?
No.
trustee Harvey?
No.
trustee McCreary? trustee Moore? trustee Moreno?
Uh, my only comment is that Mr. Ellington has served on the police and fire commission for many, many years. To the best of my knowledge, he's done a good job and I'm not aware of any reason to challenge his appointment. Which is the reason that I...
Yeah, I'm not sure, I just don't know, nobody wants to punch that. Can I have all those?
Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Harv?
Yes.
Trustee McCreary? Trustee Harv? Trustee Brown Moreno?
Yes.
Okay, now that appointment passes for trustee Ellington to be on the police and fire commission board.
Item number K. Consideration of ordinance, appoint David Upshaw to the position of building commissioner of the Village of Broadview.
Charlie? Motion to approve. Sir? It probably goes by trustee McCreary and probably second by trustee Moore. Questions and comments on these, starting with trustee Moreno?
Well, I have a number of concerns about Mr. Upshaw's position as building commissioner. Specifically, when Mr. Upshaw was first appointed to this position in 2009, we were told that he was going to become certified with code-certified. That still does not happen. There are, of all of the different communications I get from residents and businesses in Broadview and people, vendors and contractors wanting to work in Broadview, it far outweighed, most of them are about their experiences with the building department. I think that we could do better in terms of a building commissioner. I would like to see Broadview finally have someone who is experienced in the position, who is code-certified, and can do a better job than what we have with Mr. Upshaw. And I'll leave it at that.
And justice, more?
No.
I'm just saying, I've worked with Mr. Upshaw for three years now. I think he's done a good job. He has a tough position in that he has to play the bad guy in a lot of what he does. It's not easy knowing that to find permit fees and making sure that people are properly permitted in the Village of Broadview, make sure we're getting on with the dots that we have to us. When they want to go work in our community. And unfortunately, he's not the person that's going to tell them what they're going to hear. He's here to do the job. And I think he's done a good job and I'm proud of him. Still, my decision to agree.
Thank you, trustee Moreno. trustee Harv? trustee Benson?
What comments?
I've got one comment. First of all, thank you for your service, especially by trustee, uh, Mr. Upshaw. Trustee Moreno pointed out that we should get somebody more qualified without your experience. The last time we did that, we had a building commissioner that did not hold people accountable. Did not require proper licensing, did not require proper permitting. Thus, we had a situation at the school where he had a problem with their plumbing and their water. Once we got in office, we went out there and found out that they had contracted to act to do work, had not been properly licensed, did not have a proper license, did not have proper permitting. We helped them accountable, so we become a bad guy. And that's happened on most occasions for the Village of Broadview. So whole business owners accountable for protection of our water and protection of our streets. Make sure everybody's properly licensed and properly permitted to do the work they're supposed to be doing. That's a thankless job and they do it for you average. Those of you that have worked on your homes and at your residence, if you get one of these contracts, it's unscrewed with us and you don't check with us and you have a problem, we find out they're wrong and he or she doesn't have a proper license and hasn't been properly permitted throughout the Village of Broadview, then we have a problem. And that's happened since we've been on staff here. Since we've been in office, we've had several of our residents have issues with contractors. And these people had the understanding, the expectation that they could just walk in, walk in, and just start working without coming in with a permit and without any proper license. So for us to be holding people accountable today is what they were first in building codes and the entire spectrum of what's supposed to be going on in the Village of Broadview. And his staff has been there prior to him being here. He inherited the staffing head and they've been there on the job. And they are all properly licensed, general things. That's all I got to say on it. Now, clerk, I'm intent to roll for all of them.
Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Harv?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno? Trustee Harv?
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Brown Moreno?
Absolutely, no.
Item number L. Consideration of ordinance, appointing Dave Upshaw to the position of zoning board field administrator of the Village of Broadview County. Day of vote.
Motion to approve. Property motion by trustee McCreary, probably second by trustee Benson to approve the appointment to zoning board of field administrator to Mr. Upshaw. Any questions or comments on the board starting with trustee Moreno?
Yes, in this instance, and I do realize that this is an unpaid position that Mr. Upshaw holds. It's part of his overall $90,000 a year salary. However, my concern with this, and I can give you some very specifics, had to do with the way that our zoning board has been, our zoning board and our zoning matters have been handled. And what I mean by that specifically, we've had, since I've become a trustee last year, we have had a number of issues that have come before the zoning board. Specifically, the daycare center, the billboard, the restaurant, and now, most recently, the zoning changes. Every single time, our zoning board has been called to hold a meeting where they are completely unprepared, where the material has not been sufficiently gathered, where the applicant has not satisfied all of the requirements. And we have had to hold, for every one of those matters, we've had to hold multiple meetings. What this means is that we are running up additional attorney fees, additional fees for a court reporter. In at least two instances that I'm definitely aware of, we had to incur additional costs to have the notice published in the newspaper. And all of this could be avoided if we had a zoning administrator who was doing his job, which is to coordinate the material and the activities, sort of a liaison between the applicant, whether it's the village, or the individuals, or a business, and the zoning board to make sure that the zoning board is prepared for these meetings. I, there's a number of people that could be, and I don't want to say blame, but that could be found at fault, including the zoning administrator, the attorneys that he works with, and the applicants themselves. The only ones who are not at fault in this are the zoning board. The board members who do come as their schedule to hold the meeting, only to find out that everything that they need isn't there, or that everything that was supposed to be done hasn't been done and we have to start over again. So I, once again, I really think that we either need to have better training for our zoning administrator so that he knows exactly what we need and what the zoning board needs in order to move forward, so that he can... If it was one time, or even twice, you would say it's a line curve. But there have been at least five different matters before the zoning board over the last year, and not one of them were we able to accomplish without multiple, multiple, multiple meetings. So for that reason, I strongly feel that we should reconsider his appointment as zoning administrator or get him some sort of training, or both.
Trustee Moore?
Well, I think, I think that Dave's doing a good job. I mean, he, he got a lot of stuff that he trying to do. And then like they say, the other job, we're not going to even say that it's, he's not getting paid for it. But I think that if us as board members, if I see that he is not doing what I think that he should do, I mean, I can go to him and suggest that, I'm sure, this is probably the first time he heard it. So, you know, I think that we need to just be better communicators with each other instead of saying that something that he could have been doing that he's not doing. So that's my opinion.
I will say this, though, that Dave Upshaw was actually the chair of the zoning board at the time that we got the water grid. He served as the chair of the zoning board. Sometimes things don't go purposefully. That does happen. And zoning issues, there's a lot of variables as far as a lot of moving parts. In many instances, it's incumbent upon the applicant to do certain things and then they don't have it. And then we end up in the zoning meeting with the expectation that it was done and it didn't happen. Sometimes the information that we get to certain meetings and different things happen. And that would happen whether Dave was there or not. Many of them end up after whether Upshaw was the zoning administrator or not. So it's not his fault or he's not ultimately responsible for any secondary meetings or a proper meeting or the absence of a certain thing being contained in those, or zoning meetings. And that's all I got to say. Mr. Turner?
Just to take a little pressure off of Joe Upshaw relating to the zoning administrator. Being the zoning administrator, two of the biggest zoning areas that the village has had in a long period of time were presented by the applicants themselves, which is highly inconvenient. And it's not incumbent upon Mr. Upshaw to pay attention to various procedures that have to be followed as the duty of the applicant. And just so it's clear, ordinance requires reimbursement on a variety of these items, including court reporters and the actual returning time, engineering time, and zoning time as part of this. And granted, through a lot of these, there's been extra meetings associated with this, none of which were the fault of Mr. Upshaw. And at times, it may seem it, but he is obviously coming into a position that no one else wants. And he's doing, I believe, a good job. Just so it's clear, not all the blame should fall on Mr. Upshaw or any of the chief officers.
So the village is not going to have the additional expenses incurred when the applicants end up having a secondary meeting? So additional returns coming in, you take by whom?
By the advocate.
By the advocate, not the village's. Okay. Long history. Now, clerk, I'm going to roll.
Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Harv?
Yes.
Trustee McCreary?
Yes.
Trustee Harv? Trustee Brown Moreno?
No.
Is that motion carried?
Item number the opposite. Consideration of ordinance, appointing him as a construction team to the position of public works director of the Village of Broadview County. Day of vote.
Motion to approve. So I have a motion to approve from trustee McCreary and second from trustee Benson to appoint Mr. Upshaw to the, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Ames to the position of public works director of the Village of Broadview. Questions and comments from the board starting with trustee Moreno?
Well, among the, the concerns I have about Mr. Ames and the public works department include that we have a written contract, a written agreement with Mr. Ames. And it specifies certain things that he has not lived up to, including reports. Mr. Ames has steadfastly refused and even on a couple of occasions, bragged about refusing to submit a monthly report from public works. On occasion, he will give a verbal report, but it is about a certain subject matter, not about the monthly activities of public works. On occasion, he will ask Mr. McCreary, or trustee McCreary, to give a report for him. And sometimes we just simply go without. I'm going to leave it at that for the moment because there are a number of other concerns I have about our public works department and how it's being run. But specifically, I, at the very least, would like to see Mr. Ames help to his contract and the terms of his contract.
Thank you, trustee Moreno. Trustee Moore?
No.
Trustee McCreary?
No.
Trustee Harv?
I would just like to clarify, a lot of times we say, "Mr. Ames, Mr. Ames." It's actually MFA Construction that we are pointing, so let's keep it kind of separate. I know Mr. Ames is the director of... I know Mr. Ames is the director of MFA, or the owner of MFA Construction, but when we're talking in the legal terms, let's, let's make it always MFA Construction, not just these things. They're going to make it all coming out.
Thank you, trustee Moreno. Trustee Benson?
No.
Okay. I will say this to, uh, all residents out there. Our public works department has, uh, seen this, uh, tough situations with floods and downed trees and a lot of other things, uh, and they respond to everything. Uh, those residents have called us, they responded right away. The streets are the cleanest that I've seen in, and I've been here since nineteen sixty two, it's the cleanest downtown, and I don't know, uh, you know, some people complain about here, the streets be red three to four, five o'clock in the morning. But those are your type of dogs, keeping the streets clear, and that's what's keeping these big lots cleaned up, and why there not a whole lot of debris on the streets, and why we don't look like some of the neighboring towns. Uh, so, I think that these young guys will be, and, and we, the first time we've had actually to be certified water operators on our own, uh, public works department. So, you know, there, there's a lot of good things that I can say about public works, uh, that, that I just want all day. Uh, it's cut the budget for public works by about seventy-five percent. What, how much did you cut the budget over that time?
Last year, two million.
What, what, what percent did you cut? What did you call?
Uh...
For the dollar amount?
It was, it was zero to a million dollars.
He cut the budget in public works by almost a million dollars, uh, you know, and provided the same repetitive services throughout the town, you know, so, I, I, I can't see where you can get, uh, any better than that. Would that make sense, Madam Clerk? I'll entertain another overall.
Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Harbord?
Yes.
Trustee McCreary?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Brown Moreno?
No.
Is that motion, Dan, is four to one?
Item number, number N. Consideration of ordinance upon Donna Barber to the position of collector for the Village of Broadview County of Good, state of Illinois.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Probably motion by trustee Moore, probably says by trustee McCreary to appoint Donna Barber to the position of collect. Questions and comments from the board, starting to my left, trustee Moreno?
Um, specifically, my concerns about Ms. Barber is in the position of collector. Has to do with the collector's role in making sure that we actually collect the money that is owed to the Village of Broadview. And I want to give two specific instances that I've talked about before, uh, that have still not been, not only not been resolved, but no actions are being taken to resolve this. Um, and, and on Ms. Barber's part, I, not only, I would think, but, but according to statute, part of her job is to alert the village when we're not actually receiving the money that we're supposed to be receiving. So, it's not that I expect her to necessarily do the collection, but it is her responsibility to make sure that we know that the collection needs to be placed. And the two instances that I will specifically cite, and then I'll move on, is the rent from the property at twenty-two eighteen, uh, South Twelfth Avenue. Uh, that property is currently being occupied by a family member of a very close friend of hers. I don't know how much that has to do with her decision to stay silent about it, but as collector, it's incumbent on her to, uh, at the very least, alert the board that we are not receiving rent, we have not, we still have not been receiving rent. The other has to do with the use of her credit card. Uh, we still have not resolved the charge of chilies or the other item on that, uh, that same invoice. I was told, uh, by our finance director that the card is in her possession, that she is the one who has control, retains control of that card. So, I, those two specific instances are the reason that I cannot bring myself to, for her reappointment.
Oh, my goodness.
Trustee Moore?
No.
Trustee McCreary?
No.
Trustee Harbord?
No.
Trustee Moore?
No.
And, and, overall, all in favor?
Trustee Abraham is absent. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Harbord?
No.
Trustee McCreary?
Yes.
Trustee Morris?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Brown Moreno?
No.
And I will guess to, uh, keep those, uh...
Wait, it wasn't, it must have been.
It wasn't tied to three or two, so...
All of us, we had to, we had to, I had to do it, and it cares anyway, for me.
Item number O. Consideration of an ordinance upon Gerald Davis to the position of police pension board trustee for one year, terms for the Village of Broadview County of Good, state of Illinois.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Probably go...